Call the meeting to order. Those that care to, please stand for a prayer and pledge allegiance. Mr. Cameron?
Let's pray. Okay. Father, Father, we just thank you for this day and just thank you for all that you do for us and the provisions you've rendered to the city and God just your blessing on the city. Lord, I just pray, God, that you would guide and direct us as we take up the matters of the city tonight. Just give us direction for the future, present, Lord, and just be with us and Lord, just be with all our citizens and our community. In Jesus' name, pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, how close do I have to hold this? Is this good?
And you can hear yourself.
Good? Here? Alright, got it. So this is gonna look a little weird. Um, just full transparency right at the beginning. My youngest son Nick has COVID. He has been diagnosed. Uh, he's two days into it. I have been vaccinated. CDC says I can come, wear a mask, be around people, but I'm sitting six feet or more away from people just to be safe. So I'm gonna try to run the meeting from down here. And I kinda like this view a little bit better, Franklin. I can feel their eyes in the back of my head, so that's freaking me out. Alright, so let's get to business. Um, I'd like to open the mic for open citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda, please approach the podium. You'll be given five minutes to speak. Seeing no one, I'm in a closed citizen participation. Move on to the consent agenda. There are four items on our consent agenda. Hoping everybody's had a chance to look at that. If anyone has any questions, please feel free. Seeing no questions, I need a motion and a second for approval of the consent. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committee schedules. Please pay attention because there's a slight tweak here. We have a board of adjustments meeting canceled on November 4th, but our city council budget workshop and short city council meeting will take place at 5:30 on November 4th, 2021. Did I cover that? Good. Planning and zoning meeting, November 8th, 2021, city council meeting, November 16th, 2021, and city council meeting, November 30th, 2021. Moving on to old business and tabled items, item number five on the agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 21-58. By title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Republic Missouri approving the final plat of Old Savannah Phase Two subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. We had staff here to present last time. Are there any updates? Any questions from council? Any discussion from council? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 21-58.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. We're now gonna take a roll call vote on our computers.
Give it a try again.
But she's lost all screen.
Oh, everything's gone. Okay, I can voice vote her.
There, it's back.
Nope. Okay.
Excellent. Motion carries, seven to zero. Moving on to item number six on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 21-63 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Republic Missouri approving the final plat of Monte Cristo Phase 10 subdivision.
Any updates from staff? Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for a final passage of Bill 21-63.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. We are now gonna take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries, seven to zero. Moving on to item number seven on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 21-64 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Republic Missouri amending Title I Government Code, Chapter 110 Administrative Policies, Article 8, Authority to Enter Into Contracts Policy, and Chapter 120, City Officers and Employees, Article 4 Miscellaneous Provisions.
Thank you, ma'am. Staff was here last time to present. Are there any updates from staff?
I've included a memo and an exhibit to answer questions regarding head to fish in right of way.
That's right, that did come up last time. Do we have any questions or discussion from council with the updated memo or anything new? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 21-64?
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Or your computers, not so much mine. I guess they're our computers.
It's true.
Don't hand me a mic and preen time.
I think it's me. Did mine go through? Oh, it's open again. Try again.
Alright, motion carries, seven to zero. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 21-65 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Republic Missouri authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Missouri Department of Social Services Family Support Division regarding the low-income housing household water assistance program.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any updates from staff? Any questions or comments or discussion from council? Seeing none. I need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 21-65.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote. Thank you very much. Motion passes, seven to zero. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions, item number nine on our agenda. This is 21-R-48, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri Appointing a Council Member for Ward 1. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 21-R-48.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. This is my first time doing one of these, so...
So I'll take it.
Please.
So, uh, as you know, we, uh, we advertise for, if you can't hear me without leaning in, um, just let me know. So, obviously, in this, the last municipal election, we had a transition, uh, council member self moved out of the ward, so basically vacating his seat. So per our charter, we, uh, went through a selection process, the mayor and I met, or we advertised it, met with four candidates, interviewed them individually, um, about two weeks ago.
Yeah, spent a whole morning doing it.
Was that?
Spent a whole morning doing it.
Yes, and so, uh, so first and foremost, I wanna thank everybody that applied to give us a chance to come in and spend some time talking to us. Um, and so we have made a recommendation to, um, for consideration for Eric Gurkey to serve in that capacity. All of them were very qualified to do the role. Uh, he just stood out extremely, uh, well for plans and ideas for the community, they all did. But I think that from a background, uh, I believe it's in banking as well. And so how that would help us is we're continuing to navigate through the financial aspects of the community. Uh, and so that is our recommendation. Uh, I guess it's actually more the mayor's appointment with the consent or the advice of council.
So this is, I know that I usually say, are there any questions or discussion? I really will welcome questions or discussion if there are any.
Uh, yes, I would like to have a little bit of discussion, Mayor.
Please.
And I really appreciate that, you know, of course, everyone that, that applied, uh, it's definitely not an easy task to apply to sit up here on this side, even though the view's better from over there. Um, a lot of excellent candidates, very well qualified. Um, I can definitely see why Eric Gurkey would have been the recommendation. Um, I kinda looked at this very thoroughly. Um, I read through all of the applications several different times. I even filled it out myself, did a practice exercise, but wrapped my mind around this. Um, what I found in my own personal view was one of the candidates in particular, he has run for election. He ran for election in that current cycle that we had led up to there. Um, this individual earned 46 different votes. Uh, he has a very strong desire to serve our community and he's happy to have another opportunity to do so. I really liked the answers that I've seen from him. I know him personally. I know that he serves on our planning and zoning since 2018. Um, he's a super judge and involved in all of our elections. I see him every time I go and vote. Um, this individual has walked our ward. He's gone door to door in our ward, conversated with many different community members. Um, I just feel, as my own personal recommendation, that I would feel more comfortable recommending Mr. Hahn with, with my consent. And so I don't, if, if I could make a motion to recommend Mr. Hahn for this position.
Mr. Phillips?
The appointment is that of the mayor with the advice and consent of council. It's not something that's subject to a motion by council.
So, eh, totally understand where you're coming from, Mr. Franklin. I truly do. Um, it, I can go back to my personal experience when I was selected to be on city council. Mr. Updike and I both interviewed. Mr. Updike had run for the same city spot and I got selected over Mr. Updike. After getting to know Mr. Updike, I, I know he would have done a great job and he's doing a great job now. I'm certain Mr. Hahn would do a good job if he were selected. Mr. Gurkey stood out above the other candidates based upon his background, uh, commercial lending. That's gonna really lend a lot to the developers. I appreciate your point of view. It's a, it's a resolution. If you don't feel comfortable with my appointment, you obviously don't have to vote for it. Um, this is something that... This is like any other job interview that we've all been through. Job interviews are hard. You can't go based on the application alone. You can't go on who you know. You have to go on the interview also. And Mr. Gurkey just stood out above, and they were all great candidates. They truly were. Uh, but for our needs at this time, after interviewing all of them, Mr. Cameron and I felt comfortable with that decision. That's why I bring it forward to you. If you have pushback?
And, no, no, I certainly appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, and I certainly appreciate that from Mr. Cameron as well. I'm just looking at it as a standpoint, as a, you know, a citizen, someone who represents the citizens and which candidate I would feel best represented the citizens. Even though the background and education, you know, if each one of us up here was judged to that same standard, I'm not sure that we would come to the same outcome. And I completely understand the situation we've landed in and I appreciate your recommendation. Um, at this time, I'm not sure that I could give my consent with that recommendation, but I appreciate the, the, the chance to talk about this and, and talk about some of the great individuals in, in our ward and, in our city.
Absolutely. Any other questions or discussion from council? If there are no other questions or discussion, as this is a resolution, we can call it for a vote. All those in favor of Resolution 21-R-48?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, six to one. Now, Mr. Gurkey was not able to be here due to the short setting of the, uh, council meeting. I anticipate that he will be here next meeting.
He can do it at the budget meeting.
Uh, he'll get to enjoy the budget meeting. That's awesome. Moving on to new business, first reading of ordinances, item number 10 on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-66 by title only.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Republic, Republic Missouri, excuse me, amending Title 4 Land Use, Chapter 405, Zoning Regulations, Article 5 Heightened Area Requirements, Exceptions and Modifications.
Am I six feet away? Yeah, we're good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Mr. Tabor?
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Republic is requesting amendments to Chapter 405, Article 5, specifically Sections 405, 540 and 405, 545, to provide clarity to existing regulations and update building height restrictions for multifamily structures. The purpose of Article 5 is to regulate parcels as they relate to the various zoning districts that the City of Republic has adopted. Section 405, 540 consists of a chart that displays those zoning districts and conveys how various aspects of parcels are treated for each district. Examples of lot attributes include, but are not limited to, setbacks for various yards on a lot, lot width, depth, front edge requirements, and lot density. Accompanying the chart is Section 405, 545, which is a list of exceptions. Use of the chart necessitates bouncing back and forth between these two sections to understand the ordinance. This amendment is intended to reduce the list of exceptions by adding them into the chart itself when possible and removing those which are redundant or outdated together. Altogether, just simplifying the existing ordinance. Um, also included is a change in maximum building height. This amendment removes the cap on maximum building height for residential districts. Previously, all residential zoning districts capped building height at three stories. Uh, research into this topic has led staff to understand that the placement of the limit originally was related to concerns that the fire department would not be able to adequately serve these buildings. Um, since this decision was originally made, uh, staff has concluded that these concerns are now mitigated by regulations within the adopted international fire code. Staff is recommending the approval of the referenced amendment.
Thank you, Sir. Do we have questions from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I, I noticed also in the chart that the setbacks for a number of the different classifications have been, has been reduced from 25 foot to 15 foot.
Um, I think what you may be looking at there is...
It says front rear setbacks, the 25 foot has been crossed out with a 15 foot emboldened the number line, underline.
Let me look which one you're talking to.
On the chart itself.
Sure. Um, which...
540. I'm looking at front rear setbacks specifically for R3, C1, C2, C3, or, I'm sorry, not C3, but specifically R3 it looks like, actually.
That has to do with the incorporation of the, the previous, um, the previous exception in the rule. So...
Could you explain that exception?
Sure, the exception was that front yard and side street setbacks, um, for multifamily structures are reduced, are allowed to be reduced to 15 feet when off-street parking is provided in the rear of the main structure of dwelling units. Um, so what we came to the conclusion of is that as long as off-street parking is provided in those cases, we generally, we generally would allow that exception. Um, we found that it is very difficult to determine the front face and determine yards, um, which is the front yard, side yard, as many of these multifamily, um, units. Uh, for example, 60 West, if you look at that one, it would be hard to argue that 60 itself is not the front of that building, however, it's addressed off of Old Stone. Where, where is the front yard for that building? You know, how do you, how do you apply that ordinance to a building like that? So what we're looking to do, what we're looking to make sure is that off-street parking is provided for those and we will, and we do require that be provided.
I guess my concern is, um, coming from my background, is I see quite often utilities are, are in that space, that, that, that 15 foot, or specifically that first 10. And many of those utilities actually, if they're forced to the very edge of that easement, need another 10 feet of clearance from any structures and at this point they've lost that with that, with that, just that 15 foot setback.
So you're suggesting that beyond the actual easement, they need the additional 10 feet?
If they're forced, if they're forced to the very edges of those easements, yes. Um, quite often, um, National Electric Safety Code, the gas safety codes are gonna require 10-foot clearance for any permanent structures to those power lines or to those gas lines. And if they're sitting there at the 10-foot mark, um, they've only got 5-foot clearance at that point if those buildings are right up at that 15-foot offset or 15-foot setback.
Would, we, we provide a 10-foot utility easement plus then the setbacks from the edge of the 10-foot.
So this setback is from the, from the utility easement, not from the property line? So, so, yes, you, this, this, that 10-foot utility easement is within that setback.
This is only an instance as a multifamily though, where you have...
It's already crowded.
Yeah, where you have a multifamily parking lots. Um, this would not apply...
I guess what I'm thinking of is in a number of, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I'm thinking a number of those multifamily situations, that parking is literally street-side parking. They don't call it a street because it's a private drive, private road. But those parking lots are already crowded right up to the sidewalk and then from the sidewalk, there's virtually no room from there to the edge of the building as it is. And that's where all your utilities are located. Water, stormwater, sewer, gas, electric, phone.
I guess at this time, uh, none of those utilities could have utility mains located outside of the plotted easement, which would be that 10-foot. We certainly do understand that there is a complexity dealing with multiple different utilities and the spacing requirements, uh, required by the state and various codes.
And many of those utilities acquire a private easement in addition.
Okay.
I guess I'm just concerned about, about how close everything's getting to the road and there's no room left for infrastructure.
So the really good news about sitting right here is I get to look at all your faces and I realize that there were very few people that understood what was just being said. No, I love it because I didn't understand at all, so I'm gonna ask some questions so that I understand. Is that okay?
Sure.
Alright. Did you guys understand what Mr. Grooms was saying?
Yes.
Alright. Imagine you were explaining this to my 11-year-old. What was he saying?
Basically, we put the space...
I didn't do the talking of the microphone.
You can't have this microphone.
He's, he's saying that, so we provide space, um, now for utilities to go inside of. Uh, those utilities are intended to locate within that space. It's generally 10 feet at the front of the property. Um, what he is saying is that if we limit the setback and allow, if we, if we limit the setback to 15 feet instead of what was required to be 25 feet, they are losing, um, additional spacing that they require beyond that.
So the house can be 15 feet from the road as opposed to 25 feet from the road now?
That is, that is the change in the setback.
And, Mr. Grooms, you're concerned that that's not gonna leave enough room for additional growth?
My concern is that that does not leave the space requirements, um, by the various safety codes. If a, if a utility specifically is pushed to the edge of that 10-foot easement, typically they require 10 feet on either side at that point, especially if you're talking about gas and power. Um, and that space is no longer there. They can go and acquire an, a, an additional easement for that extra five feet, but then you're gonna have, then you're gonna have a confrontation, if you will, between the utility and the, the developer or the builder.
Yeah, I 100% understand what you're saying. I, I think for us, it's a balance of, um, one, this, this ordinance is, is, is clearing up a process that we had. So what you're talking about happens...
It's, it's a limited, it's a limited incidence, yes, but it will happen.
It's in the exception list that's in the, the second ordinance. So we're, we're bringing that in because that application happens where there's a, a, a parking in the rear. I think, I think for us, we, the question may be, should we provide a bigger utility easement versus talk about setbacks? Um, so that, and then that, that in and of itself is something I would wanna ask the development community because we, every time we expand easement space or restrictions on developable space, we're cutting into their ability to utilize their property. So, um, maybe a question about utility easement size, but I agree because we, we see this as, as an issue uh, on our water and wastewater side. DNR's regulated that water, drinking water has to be 10 feet away from stormwater and, and, and wastewater. So when you're talking about 10-foot easements, that becomes an issue. You push one to one side of the street and then the others to the other side of the street. And now the city's taking up a lot of space with their own municipal utilities. So, um, yeah, I think a good question. I think in, in this scenario, I, what we see, I don't know that we've ran into any issues, but then, again, you provide a different perspective from your background as far as issues on, on multifamily.
One classification too.
Yeah. I, that's what I ask you. If, if there's any instance with a, with an R3 that you're aware of and I, we can look into that too between now and the second read to see if there's...
Not just off the top of my head, uh, just seeing a number of plats in my head and, and already seeing how close, especially those uh, street-side parking that so many of them have. And, but, but to your point, um, sometimes when there's a street, that street-side parking is on both sides, what's the front and what's the back? But, um, this is limited, that setback on both sides. So maybe, maybe we can make it one or the other.
We could. I, I, I think our recommendation would stay the same just based on what we've done, but, I mean, that...
It's too late to go back now.
Well, no, it's a, it's a first read. I mean, if, if the council, if that's the, the pleasure of the council, we can certainly look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's gonna let me sit out here again, so, uh, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, so just one point of clarification though, on the easements themselves. We're required to provide easement to, in our, per our franchise agreements to the other utilities anyway, right? Isn't that correct? Our, our right-of-way, our easement acquisition, does, it makes provision for all the other utilities, does it not?
They're allowed to utilize our right-of-way.
And our easement?
And the easement, yes.
Okay.
So the right-of-way plus then also the 10-foot.
So I guess, Mr. Grooms, is the question is, it's probably the 10-foot easements are probably not adequate enough space?
Not if you're going to reduce that setback to, to, to 15 foot. I guess what I'm saying is, take, take, especially for instance, gas is usually on the very edge of that right-of-way. If that building is now just five feet off that main gas line, that, that poses an issue.
Okay, so I got, okay, so we, we can probably follow up with this because it, it's probably a legitimate question. I, I've always been under the impression that the gas fiber, they're already in our, they're, they're utilizing our easement. They're not getting, they're not, I mean, because they utilize our, our ability to secure it. So if they're utilizing our ability to secure it, why would they need to get more right, why would they need to go get more easement even when they only got 10 now everywhere else? Or do they have 15 in other places?
And all, and also, and right, rightfully so, their preference is not to locate, even though they can locate in our right-of-way, their preference is not to because if we widen the street or make changes to the street, then they have to move. So they generally try to co-locate in that 10 feet and that's where he's saying it's getting crowded.
Gotcha. I got you.
I saw Mr. Wilson raise his hand.
Yeah. Had you cleared this with the fire chief on the four stories?
At length, uh, Dwayne and I have had some discussions over building height and, uh, fire lanes and, and the, and the fire code.
You see what that's like, feeling the eyes in the back of your head?
Yeah.
This is actually doing us a favor and I'll explain it like this. The bigger the building, the taller the building, the more fire protection systems it has built in. The current three-story buildings that we have, only thing that's sprinkled is a residential living units and that's it. As the buildings go up, we will now be sprinkling the attics and voids and there'll be additional fire blocking and firewalls in there. So in respect, you're building a safer building, the taller you go up.
Okay. I just remembering the ours we've had in our three stories.
And those attics were not sprinkled and that's, the outcome is we take half the roof off the building. And all of those start on balconies where people are smoking that are also a lot sprinkled. Barbecue, yes.
Can I remind everyone to make sure we speak into the mic while we're talking?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Alright, please remember this is a first, first read and unexpected hot topics, so... I, I think that was item number 10. Uh, moving on to item number 11, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody? Alright.
You got it. That was item nine.
Was it really? No.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Oh, you're messing with me. You're messing with me. I'm teasing. A motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 21-67 by title only.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri amending Title Six Business Occupation.
Thank you ma'am, Mr. Tabor.
The city is requesting amendments to Title Six Business and Occupation, specifically chapters six hundred, six oh five, six ten, six fifteen, six thirty, and six thirty-one, in order to make general updates that bring the ordinance into conformance with the processes currently practiced by the city. Title Six lays out how the city's licensing regime ought conduct itself, the specific areas can, uh, covered by the ordinance are licensing of liquor, licensing of businesses, licensing of solicitation activities, licensing of massage establishments, cigarette taxing, licensing of pawn shops and pawnbrokers, regulations pertaining to the purchase of precious metals or jewelry by a business, and medical marijuana facilities. The responsibility of licensing was formerly undertaken by the city clerk, but currently falls under the purview of the Builds Department. This change occurred, um, around two thousand eighteen, but is not reflected by the existing ordinance. A great many of the alterations in this amendment are simply notations of this, uh, substituting Builds Department Administrator or their designee for city clerk. Um, other changes consist of merging the ordinance with current practices for material collection and application submission. Staff recommends the approval of the reference amendment.
Questions from council? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, if you have any questions, get with staff prior to the next meeting. Moving on to item number twelve, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-one dash sixty-eight by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri authorizing the city administrator to enter into a development agreement with Republic sixty-three LLC for public improvements to Hengens Farm.
Thank you ma'am, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What the council sees before him is, uh, substantially similar to all of the developments agreements we've done with Mr. Tom Rankin in Garden Business Park. Um, this parcel is immediately north of Amazon Garden Business Park and across Sawyer Road, so what you see there is a similar, um, effort to create approximately nine to ten, uh, industrial lots, uh, it, probably customizable, uh, to the tenants that we, that would, that would locate there. From an infrastructure perspective, about twenty-five hundred feet of road, water, and sewer, um, the city would construct that for the developer and be reimbursed for the materials and equipment. The, the other part I wanna mention about this, and I'm confident that Mr. Cameron will get to wastewater in the meeting, is that we would also, the city would endeavor to relocate a lift station that's located on that property, and that's part of our overall master plan that has to be done anyway, um, so, but we would incorporate it into this agreement, uh, the difference being that the city is, um, paying for the cost of relocating that lift station, um, but there's efficiency in doing it all in one project.
Questions from council?
Andrew, are there homes there, are there gonna be people, will there be a public hearing with this one?
Uh, there, there will be, uh, a public hearing, there's no homes on the property, this is, uh, a property that was primarily agricultural, there's an old barn, I think, currently in the, the southeast corner, um, but there's, there's no homes on the property.
You don't see any, foresee any frustration with this?
I don't, I don't think so, uh, we're still working through the zoning with the applicant because I think they believe that there's probably a little bit of a mixed use there. I think we would agree that retail's probably likely along MM and then the, the southeast corner there near Sawyer Road, and then the rest is probably more typical to Garden Business Park with your, like warehousing and, and industrial type use.
Okay, thank you.
So this may be putting the cart before the horse, but if we approve this, what, what's the process looking like down the road, what are we gonna be looking at, what are we gonna be doing?
So, the, this, uh, approval of this would allow, uh, David to, to enter into the agreement, and then obviously that would be contingent upon the council's approval of the actual zoning designation of the property, um, which will be coming before the council shortly.
We've entered into these agreements in the past?
We have. This would be, I believe, number five with, uh.
This will be our fifth one with Tom Rankin.
Yeah.
So we did it with the Andys, we did it with, uh, Mason's Ridge, all the Amazon site in Garden Business Park, um.
Valley Trails.
Valley Trails.
Have we lost money on any of these agreements that we've done with Mr. Rankin?
No, I mean, the last one, I hate to even throw it out there, but it is, we, we invested eight hundred thousand, recovered those funds, and it netted almost two hundred and fifty million worth of capital, so it's a, these are, these are opportunities that we're creating and a lot of the momentum that we have. Great question.
Other questions from council?
You took them all.
Sorry, I do that.
Andrew.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, did you say that that was relocating a lift station or adding a new?
It's relocating, so, uh, on that diagram in the bottom center portion, there's a little, I.
That's the box.
Yeah, it's, and the, the beauty of that is that we could, if the council chose to incorporate that property into the development and, and utilize it as a lot potentially for sale, we could do that because the lift station's gonna move to the, to the west boundary, um, kind of along the, the blue lines there to facilitate gravity sewer to, to most of that site. And that's, that, that relocation is part of a larger effort, it seems small in this scope, it's still twenty-five hundred feet, but, um, what we would call CIP nine, the ultimate Brookline alignment, uh, for a big lift station to get directly to the wastewater treatment plants, miles, but this is a, a short portion of that relocation that we're planning.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So, it's a great question about the lift station because we're considering all the things that we're paying for, we're gonna have to address regarding lift stations, uh, to Andrew's point, moving that one actually frees up a cash position for us, I think we've estimated the value around five hundred thousand dollars that moving that lift station will also provide to offset the cost of development and construction, but it'll also be a great addition to that site and then to Councilwoman, um, Mitchell. It's a great point, I will tell you that everything about what's gonna happen on MM, I would, I would prepare this council for there to be public pushback to some extent because this was a village at one time that, that the city consolidated in, but they're widening MM to five lanes, and so the three lanes, that investment is gonna get, is gonna draw a lot more potential. If I was to show, like I did at, at the Chamber Luncheon, which I look forward to doing, it's good, while a lot of people celebrate it, there's gonna be some that, that will not, and I just prepare everyone because it's a great point to make, and I appreciate you bringing it up, because there's gonna come a point where eventually some are gonna say we don't want that to happen, uh, but all the investment that we put into that area, it's gonna be hard to turn it away when the state's investing their amount of money, um, into it, but we'll, we'll take every bit of that, that into consideration, we're talking about it, that's why the public hearings and the discussions, and we'll be fully transparent with those and give people the opportunity to speak, but I think, I appreciate your consideration for those that live in the area.
And I, I should clarify a little bit on the, why the agreement before, like the zoning and, and the application, and that's in an effort just so that they can start, uh, engineering, we can start material, uh, acquisition. The, the crazy thing that we've got going on today that we found out for waterline material that's iron for fittings, uh, were seven months out, so, um, that's a little bit scary for us to be that, that far out for materials, but, um, that's why we're bringing it kinda early.
Anything else? Seeing nothing else, please remember this is a first read, so if you have questions, please get with staff. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions, item number thirteen on your agenda, this is twenty-one dash R dash forty-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri approving a preliminary plat for Emerald Valley Phase Two, a residential subdivision consisting of approximately forty-eight acres located in the thirteen hundred block of North Main Street. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution twenty-one dash R dash forty-nine.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, Mr. Tabor.
Bestor Properties LLC has applied for a preliminary plat, um, Emerald Valley Phase Two located at thirteen hundred block of North Main Street. This subdivision would see a hundred and forty-five medium density single family residential lots on a hundred and forty-eight acres. The platted lots are a minimum of nine thousand square feet in area for a density of three lots per acre. In addition to the stated lots, this plat consists of streets, open space, utility easements, and detention areas. Two new street connections will be created along Main Street and deficient right of way along North Main Street will be dedicated to the city during the final plating process. The city will work with the developer to make the sidewalk connection along Main Street between Emerald Valley Phase Two and Phase One to the south. A traffic impact study was required for this project, which recommended the addition of southbound, of a southbound left turn lane at the future intersection of Main and Topaz. Water is expected to include looping from an extension of the Main along the east side of North Main around to the Main along North Hampton Avenue in Emerald Valley Phase One. Wastewater will gravity feed from the east property line to the Evergreen Lift Station and then be pumped to the wastewater treatment plant. Both the water and wastewater systems have the capacity to serve this development. This property does contain one identified sinkhole between lots one ninety-four and ninety, one ninety-five, a sinkhole analysis was completed. Development requires compliance with city ordinances as they relate to sinkholes. This property also contains special floodplain hazard area. Development of the property requires compliance with the city ordinances they relate to floodplains. The preliminary plat contains two stormwater detention areas designed to control the release of storm water attributable from the development. The first, two point nine three acres on the south edge of the subdivision, and the second, point nine seven acres in the northwest corner. The plat contains a conceptual layout of the, of the detention areas, which are designed to mitigate existing conditions to reduce the amount of post-development flow to less than pre-development flows. Outflow will flow onto adjacent property to the south. The design of the streets, sidewalks, water, and sanitary sewer systems and stormwater detention will be reviewed and permitted during the infrastructure permitting process. Staff recommends approval of this preliminary plat.
Thank you, sir, questions from council?
Well, has South, has South Farm Road eighty-one actually been annexed and become Main Street? Did I miss that?
Um, I don't believe, I think that there is an intention not to, um, annex the entirety of that street in front of the subdivision right now. Um, we will be taking.
How do we get a left turn lane?
Green County participated in the, in the analysis of the traffic impact study, and so, um, they also provided comment on the review of that traffic impact study.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from council? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to item number fourteen on our agenda, this is twenty-one dash R dash fifty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri authorizing execution of a public donation agreement accepting real property from Convoy of Hope. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution twenty-one dash R dash fifty.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In our master planning efforts for water and wastewater, we identified the future need for an additional well and tower. In vicinity, high level vicinity, we know that, uh, this area, Brookline in general, the Brookline Industrial Park is somewhat the end of the line, um, so if you can picture Murphy Tractor, um, and all those developments in that area, Convoy of Hope, that's the end of our extension of water, so it's the furthest point away from our current, uh, tower and well, so it makes a lot of sense. The other part about the, the future plans for Convoy of Hope and that entire property, we know there's gonna be a need, uh, for additional water supply and service there, so, uh, working with Convoy of Hope, we've identified a, a parcel that they've acquired as a, a good location, um, they've offered to donate that parcel, um, in exchange for the ability to paint Convoy of Hope on that tower, which we're agreeable to, I think it's a, it's a, a fitting, uh, for the campus that they have planned there.
Mr. Franklin.
Mr. Nelson, it, now with that saying Convoy of Hope, is it going to say Convoy of Hope and City of Republic, or is it just the Convoy of Hope?
Yeah, I, I would, I would like for them to, uh, consider us incorporating the, the, yeah, the logo in there, um, and I think that they would be agreeable to that, um, I think the language in, Damon, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that they have the approval of, of the logo on the tower, and, and, and we have a voice in that too.
Every time we talk about legal interpretations and possibilities, I get a little wary, I think the short answer is illegally what you've suggested is possible. If anyone wants more detail, that's something I would suggest be taken up in a closed session.
Any other questions from council? If there is concern enough, is there a, a motion to move it to closed council, or are we prepared to move to a vote?
I may ask a clarifying question, we still have to craft an agreement to accept that, correct, so that this would give David the opportunity to voice that to Convoy of Hope, that we would like to incorporate our logo as well.
As drafted, the resolution authorizes approval of an agreement in substantially the form as the attached exhibit, and so if it were approved right now, as it is written, then it would be able to go forward. My suggestion would be that if there are concerns about this, that it'd be taken up in a closed session.
I, I'm not concerned with the ability to work on that with them, I think that they've been a tremendous partner to the community, and I think that if we desire to incorporate the R onto that tower with their logo, that they would be more than willing to do so.
I, I will say this, there's a difference between what people fight over and a difference over what's legally permissible. There's nothing in this proposed agreement that excludes the city from being able to put a label on it.
Hearing that then, uh, and as this is a resolution, I'm gonna go ahead and call it for a vote, if you're uncomfortable, you can vote no, but if you're comfortable moving forward, vote yes, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to item number fifteen, we're on fifteen, right? Fifteen. Twenty-one dash R dash fifty-one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri authorizing the execution of a fourth amendment to the, to communication lease agreement with New Cellular Wireless PCS LLC.
It's hard to read those.
I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution twenty-one dash R dash fifty-one.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so on our lovely water towers that we have here, we like to lease out space, it's, it's, uh, financially beneficial to us and beneficial to our, uh, constituents for their cell phone service, so this agreement, uh, Singular Wireless PCS AT&amp;T, uh, short version, is an extension, uh, we have an agreement with them that was set to expire in, uh, twenty twenty-three, I believe, um, this is a five-year extension with an additional five extensions to that at our option. They originally came to us with a ask of a lower lease, um, and the way the, the lease works, it increases incrementally over the five-year periods as it's extended, so what we offered was in this initial, rather than reduce it, because we kinda like receiving the rent that we were receiving, rather than reduce it, we'll pause it for one five-year period and then continue with the incremental increases over the, the term of the agreement, and they agreed to that, that's nineteen hundred dollars monthly, twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars annually, and it increases ten percent at the beginning of each five-year extension.
Questions from council? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, I will call it for immediate vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Last but not least, item number sixteen on our list, twenty-one dash R dash fifty-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic Missouri authorizing the city administrator to enter into a non-binding engagement letter with Stifel Nicola? Stiefel? S, N, and Company for underwriting services, Stiefel, is it Nicholas, is that? Stiefel Nicholas and Company for underwriting services. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution twenty-one dash R dash fifty-two.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I get the, uh, the privilege of talking about the underwriting side for a couple of years, now you've heard us talk about the wastewater plant, and Andrew has done a, the best job I know you can do trying to describe and explain that, I'm gonna dig into it a little bit more, um, but I'm gonna go through this, just trying to help me. Okay. So. So, as they navigate through this, so, sorry, there we go. So basically, the key objective is what I want to do. I'm going to go extremely fast. This is not going to be a 20-minute PowerPoint presentation. I want to hit the highlights of what it is. What we want, number one, is the recommendation, we want to go to underwriting services with Stiefel. I can explain that in greater detail if there's questions when it comes to there. I've worked with Stiefel, the city has worked with Stiefel back in 2016, for those, just a little history lesson. When we got, when I first arrived, found the financial challenges of the city, those that were here will recall, we engaged Stiefel at that time to assist us to restructure the city's debt. That would free up some working capital and also reduce the amount of interest we were paying. So those will recall, we saved a million dollars in interest in that, but also freed up some cash to pay the bills. And so, that was Stiefel that helped us navigate through it. Those will remember the '89 fire truck that was fully depreciated, that was still in the books that we owed $90,000 to. This was the group that helped us work ourselves through that. So, we are allowed to establish underwriting services. It's not a professional service to taking bids. You can do that, but given the timeline of what we're in with the wastewater plant being compliant by April of 2025, it is imperative for us to begin that process. We do have financial advisors with Piper Sandler. We did not engage necessarily in that. We have the right if we want to engage them in that service, but we're not obligated to. And so, given the timing of the project that we're at, I'm sure it'd be much easier to probably solicit bids, but what I draw your attention to is, in front of you, I've provided tonight a copy of Stiefel's prospectus to some extent, their qualifications, and I draw attention to, they are the leading underwriter in the state of Missouri, and leading the way in a lot of categories. And so, I provide that just to showcase what their background is. The timeline is we must be compliant by April of 2025. As you know, we just signed the compliance agreement at the last meeting, and so we're anticipating growth in future compliance. It will be expensive. There are funding possibilities. I won't go into all the funding possibilities tonight, but we are actually working to minimize the impact to ratepayers. So, this is what it looks like. This was the administrative order of consent that was established in October 4th of 2011. So what we're working on and have been working on is to get into compliance with what that was associated with. We signed that again. We have until April of 2025 to be compliant with that plant. So if there's any questions at any time of what that was, what that was associated with was when it rains, too much water, it only holds five gallons, we're sending 10 gallons to it. It's overflowing it, and so that's what the compliance order was, was to address stormwater getting into the system. So, what that looks like, this is the wastewater plant alternative. It's a target price of $15 million, which is kind of where we were talking about. So we went to Kansas City a couple of weeks ago to start talking about what the future looks like, and this is the first part. This is in the first phase, is what we call blending. It addresses stormwater only. This is where, going back to the 1997, the vote of the people, they voted to build their wastewater plant that required a lot of pumping. And so, this is the bottom right corner is the Shuler Creek Lift Station. And so, what that is interesting about this line is we're going to have to replace that line because the line that run through there was not big enough to facilitate any growth, but the Forest Main, for those that understand the Forest Main side of engineering, it was big enough to handle it. So we're not replacing the Forest Main, but we're going to replace that whole yellow section that goes all the way through there, and that's 10.2 million. Then we've got another lift station, these are all the existing ones, which is another 6.5 million. Then this is Brookline South, which Andrew was just talking about, which is about 2 million. However, partnering with Mr. Rankin on the development, plus using ARPA money in that partnership, this is really something that we'll be able to remove, but this is part of the overall master planning. And I'll tell you all this is because why that's a compliance-related issue is because once you fix the wastewater plant and those lines are undersized, you cannot, according to EPA and federal guidelines, it cannot run outside the manhole either. So, just because it's bypassing or going around the wastewater plant, if it goes around a manhole during a rain of it and it's sprinkling out of those nice sewer manholes, that's just as much non-compliance as the wastewater plant. So, we have got to address the capacity issues in those lines. So that's kind of what the overall scope of the project was. Then again, Lift Station Four and Forest Main, and then, so, the, oh, I can't go back, yeah, I can't. So the current compliance need that we've identified is 36.7 million, and our rates, our approved rates cover about 37 million. So, if there's any questions, again, that 37 million is addressing the 2011 compliance order. So this is the part where I get to tell you the concerning part about the trip to Kansas City and why you're seeing $150 million worth of underwriting services in there. Now, we're not talking about spending $150 million tomorrow, but we're talking about engaging someone that will help us work through the things that are going to be identified. So basically, what the city needs for future growth it needs, so there's this permit you guys, y'all have to have, it's a permission slip that, I want to use this in very general terms, it dumps water in a ditch. So if you want to dump water in a ditch in the state of Missouri or anywhere in the nation you have to have, this permit issued by the federal government through the state. So every five years, they look at that permit and they say, hey, listen, is what you're dumping in the ditch adequate to protect what's downstream or other people's property? So, in 2020, the city updated that permit, it told us what we had to meet and achieve. So when we're working on the compliance with this new plant, the engineers have all this information, but again, it says parameters are subject to change for various reasons. Sometimes those various reasons can be politically motivated. So if new administration comes in with a stronger environmental policy, things that have not been in place for a number of years may all of a sudden be brought to the forefront. And so, because this is somewhat a little bit of a background story or project for me, I've watched how, when those things change, it can have an impact on the projects that we have to do. So, when we were in Kansas City two weeks ago, this is the slide that caught my attention and those that were in the room with me at that time that realized I caught this, this is what I want to bring to your attention because this is the piece where I mentioned to you several weeks ago that I believe this is the biggest potential, this is the priority of the city, this is the biggest threat. I'm not going to try to explain to you what those numbers all are. I did not highlight those areas in red, but what those are is the effluent requirements of our plant. So in the middle column, it says 2020 permit limit. So when we got the new permit, everything that was added, it's in yellow. I don't expect you to understand how to pronounce the middle word, but it's like, it says you start to monitor. Well, they want to start adding a permit limit to your plant. Our plant right now cannot meet that criteria, even, so if they add a number to it, so like, looking at total caldol nitrogen or TKN, we call it, they added a monitoring provision in the last permit. Nothing wrong with that, it's just something that's telling you, be prepared that in the future, they're now monitoring it, and we have to sample for it, we have to test it. And so, not a big red flag necessarily, you don't necessarily want to start monitoring because it starts leading to permit limits. You'll see our phosphorus limit, and the last one we got was for monitor as well. But what's interesting is when we got to the slide, I noticed that that little one down there at the bottom says one yearly average. So that's one part per million, which I don't expect, I'm not going to go into that detail, but when you start taking on a permit limit, our wastewater plant currently is running about three. So, what they call is an NI degradation review, if you're wanting to increase the capacity of your plant. So when that little screen popped up, that's when I began to say, we're not really sure we want a one, we're not sure we're agreeing to a one, but what they do is identify, say, listen, as you're growing, if you want to increase how many gallons you dump in that ditch, you may have to start doing that as well. So that was not something necessarily that was even discussed in 2020. In fact, when we went to Jeff City in 2020, those that were with me, I specifically asked if there was going to be a nutrient criteria added to our permit, and if there was an upstream water quality standard downstream. That's a bunch of jargon to you that you don't have to completely understand. What I would tell you is that those are questions, experiences taught me, you need to ask on the front end. So when they did the NI deg review, which is required to upgrade your wastewater plant capacity, so you're saying, I dumped three gallons in the ditch today, I want to start being able to dump six gallons in the ditch. It initiates this NI deg review, and in that review, they showed that they're going to request, and they did request, us to take a one part per million. Now, I want to tell you what the impact of that one part per million and that TKN number mean for the city. So the wastewater plant estimate to increase it jumps to $82 million. So that one, that little one, is about a $60 million decision. So it's not a decision that you have to make, but when we're talking about the underwriting, I just want to show you why the numbers have escalated, because that is a nutrient criteria. So the last problem we had, that's all that stuff in red, all that stuff in yellow, that's all that that's addressing. So we do not, we currently can meet the part in red on the ammonia side, we will not make the phosphorus and TKN. So when we were in Kansas City, this alternative four, this is 6.7, what we call an MBR, Membrane Bioreactor, it addresses TKN and phosphorus. So, not going to get into, try to stay out of the weeds of that, but that's really what it takes to take care of the city for the future, and by them showing us that this is where they're going to be taking it, and our last permit had it included, it's something that we have to prepare for. It's not something we have to build tomorrow, but it's something we're going to have to prepare for, starting pretty much tomorrow. So, I want to highlight this slide right here. This is, we're getting to the end of it. So basically, this is the cost, and it's probably hard to see from this slide, but I highlighted in yellow what I want you to notice, is at the very bottom, it says the total is $141 million, pretty much in the total. So, to get in compliance with the first issue is 15 million. So the alternative, it's not going to be $82 million more, that 15 million would go into the overall cost of addressing the 82. So you see CIP 3, 6, 7, 8, those I already showed you. The $18 million one you could remove because we're eventually going to do it, I believe our growth will anticipate that and will help facilitate it. I want to show you is why we're having an underwriting service, look at $150 million, is because that's what reality is saying we have to start working on. Again, they're going to look at it, give us an idea. This is just a total approximate spend right now. So what we're doing, so just to give you an idea, we'll be in compliance, so the mayor does not go to jail, as he stated it when he signed it. That's what the first number represents, on the left side, alternative five, that's compliance only with the original 2011 issue. So dropping down, taking care of six and seven, those are those other lift station areas that I was talking about, and removing, we need to remove CIP nine probably from the design, but either way, but the total spend, I think this slide wasn't updated, but the total spend is 42.89 million. So as you can see, our current rates that we did probably does not address alternative four, that we at least need to get the engineering started for, because with the capacity that we have in the wastewater plant, within five years, with our growth rate, we'll achieve our capacity and we'll have to expand it. They've just told us in those slides, they're going to incorporate a phosphorus limit, they kind of showed us what they were going to do. The other thing about it is our permit expires in four years. Remember, these are five-year cycles, they give us this permission slip, so they could implement it in five years. Now granted, we get a compliance schedule, I'll tell you, if you're given a timeline to change your criteria, you're given three, I think it's three years to comply. So it's not like they're like, oh, here, here's your new permit, and guess what, we just changed the speed limit from 55 to 20. So there is a compliance timeline that you can do, but we believe it prudent at this time to go out and design that plant. I'm going to explain that a little bit more at this time. So, the opportunities, we learned from DNR about a statewide funding opportunity through ARPA. So as you know, the state, well, maybe you don't know, the state has access to three, or was issued around $3.2 billion. We were contacted by DNR because all the work we have done prior to this point to get ready to study and analyze this, so us even having all these conceptual drawings, we presented those to DNR, at least the majority of what we were going to do back in 2020. So we're ahead of the game by a lot of ways. Those funds have to be spent by 2026, so we're probably in the position that if we start the engineering now, and we want to apply for those. So, I will say this, that we are working actively on this channel to try to secure funding through those funds to the statewide program. So, the city got ARPA funds themselves, which we're applying to our sewer system already. So we will go ahead and try to pursue these ARPA funds from a statewide bank, and we do believe that, again, the state's asking us for to submit projects, so we're going to be submitting for $150 million through ARPA. We're trying to do everything we can to minimize the impact to our residents, that's the objective there, but we are going to leverage our $40 million that we're already willing, that we've already applied as part of that discussion. Overall, just how we're going to go about that is probably a discussion for another meeting, but I just wanted to explain to you the why, like, why underwriting for $150 million? We're not going to go underwrite $150 million tomorrow, but that's the type of numbers we're talking about. And so, I believe, that was my last slide. Yes? Any questions?
I don't want to steal all the questions. Could you go back three slides? I have to put my glasses on. One more. All right. So, I'm looking at the yellow highlighted, I see the 15 million, that's what you've educated us over the last year and a half that we're talking about, right? And the 82 million is because of that number one. So, is there a way to get around that number one? What if the standards change with a new administration where we don't have to worry about that number one? Are we spending that kind of money on something that maybe we don't need to?
It's a great question. So, being on the phone with our environmental legal counsel yesterday without disclosing exactly what that conversation is-
Damon's making faces.
But, at the same time, I'm not going to disclose, but I asked the questions about it because I do work on it, this is a background I have, so it's like, I had the right questions that I want. So, if, and this is, these are the questions that I'm going to give you, it's technical, but you need to know that I want to state them, is the fact that if there is a nutrient standard in that stream, which basically says, hey, if the state's identified that the stream is overweight, it's got too many contaminants in it, and they've identified it, done a physical on the stream and said, hey, that stream has got some trouble, so if they identify a nutrient standard, so, then we're probably, have no way, there's probably some real challenges around us moving that, so, and I know that.
Have they identified that?
That's the question I ask, is to identify what that is. So for us, it's getting all those questions answered as to when, if, and can we delay it? But, considering the fact that our permit could change, and technically, they are trying to go to a statewide water quality number of one, we learned that in Kansas City, that this is what they're trying to do throughout the state, is to get people to go to a one. I believe the one is an arbitrary number, but at the same time, I'm asking those questions, yes, but-
So you're trying to put us in a position where we're not caught flat-footed?
That's correct. But I believe, experience has taught me, that when you do, they call this thing called a triennial review, it's required by each state every three years, they have to review their water quality standards. Their tri, Arnold, whatever, review is next year.
You think it's coming.
I believe when you add nitrate on that, going back to that, the one that caught my real attention was when we got our permit and it changes to the TKN, the yellow highlight. When you start monitoring for that, instead of telling me, as in that back, it says, you better start preparing for that. So we were asking the engineers, we need to prepare for phosphorus because they've got us on a monitoring schedule, because the middle column, again, is what our, that's what our current permit says, you just got to monitor. But if you change, you're going to go to a one. Like, well, that's different than what you said a year ago, and that's what's different that's in our permit. So it tells me where they're already anticipating going without actually hearing it from them, which we did hear that from them. But I think there's, I think there's room for us to discuss it, and I think we will discuss it, because I want to know, is there really an impact that warrants us to have to go to that? And that has to be demonstrated.
Do you think we have a real shot at the ARPA funds?
Yes. I think that we were requested, I think we have a legitimate shot, but it's going to take quite a bit of work.
What should we be asking about this? I mean, I know this is your background, this is where you came up, before you were city manager, you did this stuff. So what should we be looking for as city council?
What is the best way that we can minimize the impact to the resident? Because, what do we need to do? We need to exert whatever resources we need to do to work on this. This is, I would just say this, this is the priority. We may have to adjust our priorities overall as a city, like how we do things, how we navigate through the city through a daily basis, because this is probably the largest issue that, in my office right now, that we're going to be going to working on, and it's going to require a lot of time in communicating what our story is and why. I'll say this, is, we're going to do our absolute best to secure every dollar we can to minimize that impact, but questions-wise, it's, what if we don't? What if we just say, hey, what if we just don't do this at all?
What happens?
Well, if you don't do it at all, then pretty much, once you get to a percentage of the capacity of the wastewater plant, you're just saying, listen, the way to get around that, but it still doesn't mean they won't change it, is, you don't grow, you stop.
They can make us stop growing.
Well, because once you reach a certain place, you could be right back in a compliance order, because once you reach 75% of the current capacity, so once you say the speed limit's 100, once you hit 75 miles an hour, they're like, listen, you better figure out a way to slow your car down because you're about to hit. So they meant this required as part of our permission slip, that once you hit that 75 mile an hour speed limit at 100, you got to come back and say, what are your plans? You got to at least be in design. And you also got to remember that every five years, they reevaluate that number. So, if we do absolutely nothing, I think I did the math on this yesterday, if we do nothing and have to address the one and potentially the nitrogen number, it's still $40 million more to address it. Just the current rate, if we don't grow, if we don't grow another resident, is probably right there.
Sorry for all the questions.
No, it's a great, it's a great question.
Any other questions?
Can I make one more statement?
I don't think I could stop you.
We will try every, I, I will, I will promise you, we will exert every ounce that we have in ability and expertise and delegation and whatever we got to do to work on this. I, my, I'm, I'm very confident that we have a story to tell, and I believe that we can demonstrate that we have demonstrated the due diligence because we're prepared to do this now, where I don't think anyone's even got the cost estimates, the engineering work done. And because it's got to be spent by twenty twenty-six, they're asking us for projects to submit. I think that if we work hard, we'll do our best for the community.
This reminds me of the, the crosswalk over the highway. You know why this reminds me? Remember all that fighting we got on Facebook about the, the bridge that we were going to put over, and middle schoolers wouldn't jump across, and everybody freaked out, and Andrew stood in front of us and said, we're not going to get this. We're just asking to apply because all these other places are so far ahead of us in their building designs and stuff. Is this similar to that? Like, we're just further ahead of everybody else, and that's we're the front of the line?
Yeah, we started in twenty seventeen on this review of what we did. And we told them with our growth, what, what we did is actually very strategic was, hey, we're growing. Plan for our growth as your overall plan. So, when we went to Kansas City two or three weeks ago, I think I'm going to hear about the growth and development of the city. And we're going to play a little game of, you know, Jenga. Like, can we pull this out, do this, and it's going to work out. And then all of a sudden, like I told you, when I saw this slide, I'm like, that's a material change or concern that you need to be, I would, I would love, love, love not to be sitting up here having to give this discussion. But it's just like I told Burns and Mack, we hired you to tell us what we need, not we, what we need to do, not we want to hear. And I'm not paid to tell you what you want to hear, what you need to hear. And that's a, that, that's a sobering slide to me that we need to work hard on. But yes, because we've worked hard already in our due diligence to prepare for it, I believe it positions us right at the front. And I believe people would tell you that. I've heard that. But I can't guarantee it because that's a lot of, that's a big ask.
Alright. Any other questions?
David, so we have never, we don't normally monitor nitrogen. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Great question. Great question. So, yes, that, so what happens is, we don't normally monitor it. And we don't have to monitor it until they put it in a permit like that. So, our permission slips is, hey, guess what? We want to change something in your five-year cycle. We want to start seeing what you're putting in the stream on that. So, we could test it before, we just didn't. And so, they're saying, hey, we want to start looking at that now. Well, what happens is, once you start evaluating, it's like getting your blood pressure checked. The doctor may say, hey, you need blood pressure medicine, you got to reduce it. And so, that's the best way I can describe it. Like, hey, we want to start monitoring and doing some checks. And we see your numbers are going up, or, and I will tell you that those numbers are going to be they're notoriously high all over the state. I mean, that's not an uncommon. I've just never seen, but I haven't, in my career, I've never seen a TKN request show up on a monitoring, ever. But I've not been in the wastewater plant for a long, long time. So, it's a great question.
I don't know if this is a good question, but is this something where our representatives, our people can fight against this or create legislation when they, I mean, is this something they're aware of that maybe they see is unnecessary?
So, there are folks that are, that are aware, but this is a, that, the MPDS permit is going back, is actually governed by forty CFR, that chapter forty, it's a code of federal regulation. So, this little report that's called anti-degradation is outlined in that little forty CFR. What they call it is anti-backsliding. So, basically, once it's put into our permit, we can't go backwards. So, you, you're not allowed to change the speed limit from fifty to a hundred. You're like, hey, you got to go from fifty to forty to thirty to twenty. So, a lot of that's not even, the state of Missouri just administrates the federal program for the state, for the federal government. So, I don't consider that an unfunded mandate. I would have considered it though, if they have a, a standard that says, hey, just using simple terms, your blood pressure's too high, we got to get it, we got to get it down. So, we've identified it. So, now you have to start doing this to get it down to a one. So, I, I believe you can try. My experience over the, it's just, once it's established, that's why I was like, I'm not sure we're ready to accept a one, when I want to know why we have to take it. And I don't know if that's been fully explained to us, is that why we have to take it? And why, maybe there's not a blood pressure problem.
That's actually, I wanted to follow up on your question because I'm going to, I'm going to push David a little bit more. Well, here's the thing. I like living my life at one forty over a hundred blood pressure. That's just where I operate at. The doctor says that that's wrong. So, what if that one, or any of those numbers up there are wrong? Who, who, who does, who does the pushback on the EPA or the federal regulations? What if they're wrong? And who can we talk to to say we disagree with that, or would it do any good at all? Should I just listen to the doctor and take the blood pressure?
No, I, I, well. No. Well, well, it's, it's like I told my wife, I can never get away from my wife. So, I have spent a long time in my career working against taking on standards, which is why I said, in the meeting, I said, I don't ever recall her agreeing to a one.
Right. So, do we have to agree to it?
I think you have a very difficult challenge to deal with that, but it is, it is, it's definitely questions that have to be asked. And so, what I would say is this, just like you had explained to me, justify the position, I've asked the same question. So, those same questions are going to come forward. We want to, we're going to want to take another look at the anti-degrade report and reconsider, you know, I'm, you know, I don't want to assume that one's going to work, but I want to know why. We want to know why. So, I guess all that is, is going to be, you know, evaluating it, because there's things that do play into that. We, we pump, we go into, you know, what they call losing stream, which means it goes below the ground and back up. It's not like, so there's a lot of things that factor into why they could say, hey, all those have to do it. So, yes, we will work on it. We are working on it. But I don't want to put us at negative fight with.
So, if I hear you right, we're looking into it. We're going to fight if we can fight, but you're putting by this resolution in a position where we can fight, and if we lose, we'll be okay.
Yes, we have to. Yeah. What I will say is this, regardless of the fight now, we need to prepare, which is what I was asking the engineering firm to do. Because they threw the monitoring in there, because we have monitoring for phosphorus, you need to give us a plan that will address those two things, should five years from now they do it, or ten years from now they do it. But I wasn't expecting in the anti-degrade report on the very first one to already see it immediately thrown in there, when I've never seen it before. So, if we can save five years in between, yeah, but I mean, again, but by going through the engineering and getting the engineering done, our growth may slow down. I mean, we can't guarantee there's not, I mean, I don't foresee that at all, but, um, but at the same time, if it did, maybe we don't grow at twelve and a half percent per year, maybe it's five. What frees up capacity, we don't have to move our plant further. But even if we don't move the plant further, we don't expand it, we still have to meet the compliance issue. But if we grow, or we don't grow, we don't need to expand it earlier, then it doesn't really initiate that. The problem is that four-year review that's coming up, that'll say, okay, you're not growing, but we have the right to change, which is what they can do. And so.
Does this have a lot of town scrambling?
No.
That they added this?
No, this, this is not something that they, they've added. What they're saying is, if you stay at the same volume, if you say, hey, listen, our plant allows you to put three gallons of water, which is not right, but I'm just using the simple term I can. You can dump three gallons of water in there a day. We're asking them to dump six point seven million gallons of water in there a day because of growth and capacity and everything else. Like, okay. Well, if you're going to do that, you're going to take that number on like other cities have done. If you stay right where you're at, we can't say that just yet because there's no reason for an anti-degrade review report. So, what triggered that review was, hey, we're going to ask for more capacity. And they're like, oh, well, guess what? If you're going to want more, we're going to get something from you too. So, if we just stay right where we're at and don't grow at all, and don't even allow any more, that may not happen, but because they just told me it was going to happen when we saw that report, that's what you need to plan for. And, but at the same time, we're working this from several angles, but if we don't start the engineering of that plant in four years or five years, I suspect you're going to be building it anyway. And I don't think, I'll say this. My very first wastewater plant, right out of, right out of college, or my first project, was, I'm going to tell you the story, it's worth telling. Because I went to the administrator and I said, listen, here's the new plant we got to do, and it was, it was addressing phosphorus. And, and so, they, it was ten point five million. You know what we ended up building that plant for? Twenty-five million. Because we, we waited, and we waited. Like, nope, we don't have to do it. And sure enough, it cost us twice as much because we hesitated. And I don't want to find us where we don't plan for it. And here's the other part. If we get the engineering part done, and the money becomes available, we're ready to rock and roll and get that thing built, and the money's spent by twenty twenty-six. But I think it's a prudent plan to do because I still believe you're going to have to build that plant. And if we can reduce it in any way, I, this is just working on the underwriting, but I can't talk about the underwriting if I don't talk about what the actual capital needs could be in the future.
One quick question.
Please.
I want to play the role of the eleven-year-old son here.
There you go.
Can you explain the difference between, what, you keep talking about the one. What is the one?
Great question. So, we call it one milligram per liter or one part per million. So, um, it's just a, it's a pollutant saying, hey, listen, you can't have any, it's almost saying you can't have anything in there. Uh, that's what I'll tell you it is. That's about as close to zero, obviously, as you can get. So, that's what it is. It's one part per million or one milligram per liter.
And that is of the, of the TKN, or is that phosphorus?
That's phospho, so, sorry, the total phosphorus is, is one. Um, and then TKN is a mon, is monitor only right now.
And that's an annual average of one?
So, it's a yearly, annual average. And so, right now, our plant, so if, if EP, if, if it does change to a one yearly average, and we don't grow as fast, then we could push off the plant being built.
What is it now, David?
It's about three. I think it averages around, I saw the latest numbers because I asked Andrew for the three points.
That's what you said.
Yeah, so it's gone as high as eleven. Now, I will say there is a chemical way to reduce it, but I'm not going to get into all of that. But it, it, there is a way that you can possibly get to it. I wouldn't recommend it. We have the ability to kind of knock it down now. But to say that we can get it down to a one-year, one yearly average, once you take a permit limit, it's just like anything else. You're saying, I'm going to promise that I can make that happen. And, um, that's a big ask for a plant that's not designed to remove phosphorus. So, but it's, uh, it's a great question. I will say the irony of the, the ammonia limit, though, this is my favorite part, is that as you reduce ammonia, like it's going from three point one to two point four in some of those areas, do you know what it creates when you reduce it? Nitrate. Sorry, I digress. That's my technical point for the night. So, if you drive it down to zero, guess what number goes up? Nitrate. You can remove it all.
Stop geeking out.
Well, it's just something that I don't, we're going to work our, we're going to work very diligently, sir, to try to do the best to protect our citizens like we always do. That's where I'm going to end that.
Fixing one problem creates another.
It does. But I'm not going to get into my political philosophy on how they change policy.
As this is a resolution, we can call it for a vote, which I would like to do. All those in favor of approving this resolution? Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron, you've been quiet tonight. Do you have anything to add?
No, but I, uh, I do have something to add. I appreciate the work of our staff that has worked very hard on this. Andrew, I know that you've had the most difficult job trying to explain this stuff in the past and, um, what it does, but just the work that our staff has put forth to, to do this. And the mayor, he's, he's been privy to some of this conversation, uh, and the work that we're going to be doing to work on, to, to find funding and to continue to work on those things. So, I appreciate the assistance and the work that we're going to do, uh, to get that done. To Andrew, on this water tower, I want to, I want to say just in the mindset of what we do, uh, it was Andrew's idea to say, listen, let's ask for a donation and maybe, so finding land for a water tower is not easy. But for Convoy to partner with us to do that, but I just, I'm thankful for the way your mind works in those areas where you're, you're, it's always stirring. You're always challenging me to push those things and find those solutions. So, to, to have the courage to say, hey, maybe do a land donation, saves our taxpayers' money just in general going to try and find four or five acres. So, it's, it's just, I appreciate the work. Looking forward to the budget workshop next week, to have the discussion, um, on the budget. So, tomorrow, the groundbreaking for Convoy of Hope. I believe the, the invite said two thirty on the original. I believe the updated one, because the weather states it will be at three o'clock tomorrow. So, looking forward to celebrating with Convoy, the project. And so, great questions on the zoning questions, uh, Jen, council member grooms. Appreciate just the questions about, uh, the easements. I, I love the dialogue. We, we like to be asked questions. We like to talk about it. Uh, we do like to geek out sometimes. So, uh, appreciate everybody and just, this community. This is by far the longest meeting we've had in a long time, but.
We just missed each other. We just wanted to hang out for a while.
Yeah. Well, that's all I have.
Comments from council? Mr. Franklin?
We're just making it for last time. But, uh, no, I appreciate everyone's hard work. Um, it's a lot of information on sewer. I appreciate having your expertise on all that. It's a lot to absorb, uh, all of the help we can get.
Yeah.
Certainly, we could use. But, uh, last couple of weeks ago, didn't get a chance to talk about last meeting, but we had the, uh, welcome sign dedication a few weeks ago. That was my first chance to really go out and physically stand next to it and soak it in. I mean, that, that is awesome. That, that, when you're standing next to it, you really bring it in, and you can see how big it is. Every day, I'm driving by that thing just hoping to see it lit up and, and have that moment when I get to drive into Republic and see that. So, I'm really looking forward to that. Um, I'm very thankful for all of the hard work that all of staff did, you know, from the beginning, all the way from, you know, those first disappointments on not getting a place to where it is now. It's a truly an impressive sight to see. But I'd just like to thank everybody, all of the, the city employees, everyone that's put their, their heart and soul into that, and, and the contractors, everyone that built it. It was great to see everyone out there Friday. Mr. Mayor, you look great on the front page of the paper, and you look great on the news. So, but, uh, just like to thank everybody and thank you for all the hard work that everyone gives us here, the citizens of Republic. Thank you.
Any other council members? Alright, and.
And congratulations, Mr. Gerke.
Ah, yes. We'll be able to congratulate him in person next week.
Absolutely.
And, uh, sorry about having to sit out here, guys. Thanks for putting up with me.
I love it.
I didn't want to miss the meeting. I just didn't want to miss the meeting.